Good morning. It's 9:00 AM on November 20, 2017. This is, I believe, the third day of our hearing on... Fourth day? Fourth day. Okay. Time flies when you're having fun. Fourth day in our hearing on SSDP 2016-00415. I'm still John Gault, and the applicant is still King County, and the city is still Semamish. I think there are some other changes in personnel, but we'll find out about that as we roll along today. My notes made contemporaneously after the close of our hearing on our last day was that the parties had agreed that closing would be in writing, that King County wanted opportunity to submit a rebuttal before the closing argument was submitted, that King County was going to call Mr. Overton as a witness today, and then Semamish was going to call a Mr. Alexander as a witness today, that I had said there would be no public rebuttal because we already did that the last time we were together, and that we would then conclude the day by setting a schedule for the submittal of that King County rebuttal and the closing statements. Trusting that that's what everybody else has in their notes as the process, I'm prepared to move forward. Ms. Fleming, you look anxious to say something.
I'm not anxious. Just, we are also going to call Ms. Bailey to address some specific inquiries that you'd had that you asked her to inquire.
Last week, I guess it was? Yeah, late last week. In fact, November 16th, to be precise. King County sent to all of us who are on the principal's email list a memorandum from Mr. Schultheis dated the 16th entitled "East Lake-Semamish Trail Demand Analyses- amended." I would propose at this time to enter it as our next exhibit unless there's an objection. Hearing, no objection.
Do you need another copy? Because I have...
I would love for you to give one to the clerk if you have one. That would be wonderful. Thank you. The memorandum just described is here with entered as Exhibit 113. 113. Ms. Fleming, do you wish to call Mr. Overton and/or somebody else?
Yes, I'll call Ms. Bailey. Jenny Bailey.
Ms. Bailey, you were sworn previously. You're still under oath.
Good morning, Ms. Bailey. I want to ask you to follow up on a couple of questions that Mr. Gault, the hearing examiner, had asked you.
I think we need to have you closer to the mic, or maybe we can boost the overall volume one notch without incurring the wrath of the feedback gods. Let's try that.
Okay. How's that? Better?
We'll find out as you ask your questions.
During the hearing, the hearing examiner asked you about prior segments of the ELST and whether they were 18 feet in width and whether there were any deviations. And you recalled, had some recollections, but you said you would check and confirm this. So what did you find when you checked and determined whether there were deviations?
Over all of the previous segments that were constructed, there were three deviations for short-span bridges, one in North Semamish and two in Issaquah.
Do you know, when you say "short-span bridges," how much, how long that is?
I think you're typically talking 30 feet or less.
Okay. Now, I want to ask you some questions about the survey work that was performed in response to specific issues that were raised. Can you, first of all, review, clarify what survey work has been done to date?
Right. So there was an initial survey back in 2007, 2008. Then we went back out on the ground in 2014 to do additional survey. And then we updated our base map with additional updated aerial imagery in 2016. And then we just do routine updates as part of our ongoing design ever since.
And will the survey be updated prior to submission of the clearing and grading permit?
Yes. We go out and we'll look at what's changed, and we pick that up going into 90.
Okay. Is it fair to say that when conducting a survey, you can only include the information that is either observable on the ground or that is located in the public record?
Yes, that's correct.
Now, during presentation of the city's materials, they referred to two specific items that they said were not in the plans. The first one they referred to is one relating to Mr. Crowe, a drainage structure. Have you looked into this?
Yes, I have.
And is that drainage structure that the city referred to on the plan set?
No, it is not.
And do you know why it's not on the plan set?
What tends to happen with these private drainage systems is that they're very, very difficult to find in the field. And then there aren't always good public records of their existence. And so what we typically do is we move from 60% to 90%. We spend a lot of time focused on understanding how water moves through the corridor. And so in the course of really examining these matters, we often will find these drain systems at that point. The other thing is that we're, in conjunction with reviewing public comment and moving our design from 60% to 90%, we're identifying things that were disclosed in public comments and addressing those as well.
Okay. So did Mr. Crowe provide information about this pipe in the public comment?
He did.
Okay. And does the pipe that he referred to impact the trail design in any way?
No, it wouldn't change the footprint. What we would do is identify it as we move into 90% and figure out how to protect the pipe.
Okay. Another one that was referenced was a Mr. or Mrs. Kaufman at Station 364. And there was a report that a drainage pipe was not on the plan set. Did you check and confirm that?
Yes, I did.
And what was the reason that... Was it missing? And what was the reason that it was missing?
It was missing from the plans. And it's similar circumstance. It's not easy to find in the field and wasn't a matter of public record.
Okay. And same question. Did the Kaufmans provide information about the pipe in the public comment process?
They did.
Okay. And has that been added to the survey information?
It's on our list, and it's being added, yes.
Okay. And does that impact the trail design in any way?
No, it wouldn't change the footprint of the trail.
Now, Mr. Hearing Examiner asked some specific questions about Semamish Plateau and Water showing utility structures in Exhibit 40. Have you reviewed the comments made by Semamish Plateau and Water at Exhibit 40?
Yes, our design team has been looking at those in great detail and has requested additional information and as-built drawings from the district, as well as other utilities. And we're in the process of reconciling those with the utilities we know about on our plans and adding things to our base map for the 90%.
Okay. And how will the county ensure that utilities are protected, like Semamish Water and Plateau?
The best thing we do is we identify them on the plans and require that the contractor protect them.
Is the 60% design normally the stage in which you would seek and incorporate comments from utility providers?
Yes. Going into 60%, we'll put whatever utilities we know about on the plans, but we seek a lot more detail. We really drill into it, moving from 60% to 90%.
Okay. I want to ask you about changes in the design between the issuance of the shoreline permit or approval of the shoreline permit and construction. Mr. Hearing Examiner was expressing concern that the project he was approving might not be the project that gets built. As the lead consultant on this project, what is your understanding of the county's authority to make changes to the project after issuance of the shoreline permit?
All the changes we make, it's very transparent. They are shown on the 90% plans that get submitted in conjunction with grading. And the types of changes that you see made are those that are necessary to provide the details to construct the project. And then it's also, there's a lot of responding to permit comments and conditions and any settlement agreements that may come up through the shoreline process.
Okay. So what's your understanding of the permissible changes?
We don't do anything that would change the project footprint that wouldn't be captured in our 90% plans.
Okay.
And there aren't changes to the footprint unless they come up in response to shoreline comments.
Okay. And shoreline permit conditions?
Right.
Okay. Did you check, in order to get to this question raised by Mr. Hearing Examiner, did you check to see on Segment A whether the county had unilaterally made any changes to the footprint after approval of the shoreline permit?
I did check.
And what did you learn?
On South Semamish Segment A, there were no changes to the footprint that were not driven by one of two things. That would be the conditions and settlement agreements associated with shoreline, and then the details necessary to advance to construction.
Okay. So just to be clear, there was no changes to the footprint unless it was shoreline conditions, settlement agreement conditions, or clearing and grading permit conditions? And same question for North Segment. Did you check in response to Mr. Hearing Examiner's concerns, did you check to see what changes were made after issuance of the shoreline permit and construction of the project?
Yeah. In between issuance of the shoreline permit and going to construction, the changes that were made were in response to shoreline permit conditions and public comments.
Okay. And I want to ask you questions about driveways. There were some questions about the situation with driveways consolidations. Were any driveway crossings eliminated on Segment A?
No.
Were any driveway crossings eliminated on the North Segment?
No.
Did the 60% plans for this segment, Segment B, include plans for driveway crossing consolidations?
Yes, they did.
And have those plans been modified in response to public comment?
Yes, they were.
And can you explain how they've been modified in response to public comment?
All four of the driveways that were going to be eliminated are going to stay and remain in place. We're not eliminating them. And that was based on public comment and consultation with East Side Fire and Rescue.
Okay. During the hearing, Mr. Hearing Examiner asked you some questions about how many pedestrian crossings there are now and how many there will be after the consolidations. Did you check into that information?
I did. And my recollection is that the context of the question had to do with the sharing of stairs. And so what I did is I went into Exhibit 7, which is the revised 60% plans, and I went to those EX sheets. And I counted up the existing... I looked at structures. So I looked at stairs, and there's a handful of bridges that also provide access to the trail today. And I counted those up. There's 95 of them. And then I compared it to what we're proposing. And after development of the trail, there would be 66. And so that difference between 95 and 66 is reflective of the sharing of some of those stairs.
All right. I want to move on to ask you some questions about fences. Do the project plans include fences where necessary for safety?
They do.
All right. And can you explain where fences are installed and why?
So we use guard rail for safety when we're trying to separate trail use from vehicular use when it's adjacent. And then we typically use chain-link fence to delineate other sorts of hazards. The most frequent would be when we're... When we have a retaining wall with a drop or a steeper slope immediately adjacent to the trail.
Are fences installed to make sure, to ensure that members of the public using the trail are not exposed to hazards?
Yes. So as I mentioned, the primary hazard that we see out there are edge hazards where there's a drop or a steeper slope.
During public testimony, Mr. Crowe, Mr. Parrott, and Mr. Bates, I think I'm saying his name wrong, all raised issues about an edge hazard on the west side of the trail. Did you look into that? And what did you find?
I did look into it. And we are proposing chain-link fence there in the area that they were concerned about.
Okay.
And that will show on our 90% plans.
And Mr. Bates also raised an issue...
Excuse me. Showed on the which percent plan?
90%.
So it's not on Exhibit 7?
No. It's not in Exhibit 7 to date. But as we advance the design, we've been looking at some of those areas where it's steeper, adjacent to the trail, and sort of advancing some of that evaluation. And so fence is proposed there now.
Mr. Bates also raised an issue related to the lawn area, use of a lawn area. Are you familiar with what he's referring to?
This is a very wide area of the corridor. And we proposed onsite mitigation in the area that Mr. Parrott was referring to. And it's all within King County property.
I want to ask you about a couple other comments during the hearing so far. Mr. McNabb, Schumacher, and I think Davis? I can't tell if it's Davis or David. We're concerned... Davis, we're concerned about emergency access with regard to their lane. And did you look into that?
I did.
And is the project impacting their emergency access? Is their lane narrowing in any way?
No, we're not narrowing their lane at all.
Okay. And Mrs. McNabb suggested that the trail is going through her residence. Is that occurring?
No, the trail's not going through her residence.
Okay. Is the trail project impacting her residence?
No, it's not impacting her residence.
Okay. And Ms. Rose Large raised a question about access to her property. And she said she would have to go through, across her neighbor's property. Did you look into this issue?
I did look into it.
And what did you learn?
There is an existing stair on the south side of her property that she can use to get down. And it's all on King County property. And it's where we were intending her to access the other... Getting across the trail.
Okay. And is this set of stairs impacted by this development proposal?
No.
Okay. Mr. Hearing Examiner asked you questions about the culverts on private property?
Yes, on Pine Lake Creek and Zaccus Creek.
So if I recollect, his question was, if the county is unable to obtain the permission of the private property owners and replacement of these culverts is removed from this project, would that impact your mitigation? I think he said, does that shortchange you on mitigation? Did you look into this?
I did.
Okay. And what did you find?
If you look at Exhibit 16, and I'm going to refer you to Bates 795, there's a summary of impacts for stream channels and buffers. And what you would find if you looked at that and you did the math, we're actually... We have a net gain in stream channel today. And if you take out the amounts for Zaccus Creek and for Pine Lake Creek, you would still have a net gain in stream channel. Likewise, that table is also showing that we're impacting .21 acre of stream buffer. And if you go back to our mitigation section in this exhibit...
Is that 802? That is 802, right?
Sorry, I can't read this. Bates 802, in the summary of proposed mitigation, Section 5.3.1, we're proposing 0.24 acre of stream buffer mitigation. So we ran the numbers, and we would still be fine on mitigation based on the city's code requirements, even if we couldn't construct those two fish-passable culverts.
Okay. And just to clarify, looking at Bates 795, that's a chart that... Or a table that has summary of impacts on stream channels and buffers?
Mm-hmm. Yes.
Okay. And what is the total... This table, what does it indicate? Is the total stream channel gain as a result of this development proposal?
So there's one column that shows the loss and one column that shows the gain. And it's a net of about 69 linear feet. And what you lose with Pine Lake Creek, if we didn't construct that culvert, is 22 feet. And what you would lose with Zaccus Creek... Well, actually, it would be less than 22 because the 22 is for both the upstream, the culvert under the trail and the culvert under shoreline. And on Zaccus Creek, it would be 15 feet or less.
Okay. So is the total gain 93?
The total...
Feet?
Yes, it's 93 feet.
Okay. And there's a chart that lists where that gain is coming from. Is that right?
Right.
Okay. And Pine Lake Creek, which is one of the two private culverts, the linear feet is 22 feet?
Yeah. And that's the number of linear feet for both the culvert under the trail and the culvert under shoreline.
Okay. So the private property culvert would be less than 22?
Less than 22 feet.
Okay. And then you have, for Zaccus Creek, 15 linear feet?
Correct.
And so if you take the 93 gain, you'd subtract it by 15, and then something less than 22, correct?
Right, right.
Okay. And then the total stream channel loss is 24. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. So it would be 93 minus 15 minus something less than 22 would be there about 60-something feet.
Right.
Okay. All right. So after checking into this question, what is your conclusion about the impact of having the two private property owners, you know, not agree to culvert replacement on their property? What is the impact of that on the county's mitigation?
We would still be meeting the city's code requirements. We have adequate mitigation. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm glad you're back, Ms. Bailey.
Uh-oh, you have questions, right?
I spent some time during the hiatus comparing public comments with plans and trying to link where people were, some of which were quite easy to figure out, some of which were not so easy to figure out where they were. And as a result of that little exercise, I have a few questions. Do you have a set of the 60% revised?
We do.
In front of you? And again, I do thank the county for providing me with this much better-to-read set. So now I'm going to use that. So I'm not going to be able to give you Bates' numbers. We'll just use AL. All of my comments are from the AL series of exhibits. On Sheet AL 13...
Yes.
Between Stations 342 approximately plus 25 and 344 plus approximately 50, I generally try not to get any more precise than splitting it into quarters. There is a westerly shift. And my question here is because of, not a public comment, but the city's condition regarding westerly shifts when you're within the 50-foot setback. And so my question is, why is the footprint shifted to the west along this area? There's no wetland on the upslope side. So I was curious what pushed the design to the west.
As you progress north from here, what you'll see on subsequent sheets is we're into an area where there are many bisected properties. So property with typically a home on the east side of the trail and then waterfront property on the west. And the existing condition oftentimes is stairs on both sides. And so what we were doing with the westerly shift is trying to preserve all those stairs to the east and address the access needs on the west side of the trail. Because you're in a cut slope, the topography is typically rising to the east and dropping to the west. And so as you get into that cut slope condition going east and the intricacy of those stairs and the proximity to the residences, it's a much lower impact to address the access needs on the west side of the trail. So it's all about access.
Okay. between Stations approximately 355 plus 75, which would be just about at that point of tangency mark there, north of driveway number eight, and 357 plus 50, which is about midway on the sheet. Why the westerly shift there?
Part of it is driven by the driveway intersection to the south. And part of it is just balancing the proximity to wetlands on both sides of the trail.
Thank you. On Sheet AL 19...
Okay.
Between approximately 373 plus 75 and 374 plus 75. It's the little chicane section. Is that westerly shift because of Wetland 23A? It's got 23B on the other side.
Right. It's a combination of the wetland and then some of the stair access that you see depicted. There's Stair 61 and Stair 62, which I believe came into consideration through this area.
Thank you. I have a general question and one example. There are more, but I must have been on this particular page when I finally decided to write the question down. So let's jump ahead to AL 36. At Station 456 plus 75, or thereabouts. It's probably more like 60 or 65 instead of 75. With reference to Stair number 81, it's on the water side. See the L-shaped stair?
Yes.
It would appear that the bottom of the new stair is outside of the right-of-way, if I'm following all of the lines correctly. Do you see that?
Right. And those stairs have been modified to be parallel to the trail.
Oh. Well, shoot. You've ruined my question. But let me ask it because I think I saw other places where it occurs. First, let me make a note of that. First, let me make a note of that. And then I'll ask the general question. So the 90% plan is going to have a different configuration there? So it's going to parallel the wall and the trail?
That's the most typical configuration that we use.
So the general question is, when you show something on the plans where construction's going to occur outside of the right-of-way, what authorization does the county have to undertake construction outside the right-of-way?
There are very, very limited places where that would occur. There are five places in the entire 3.5 miles where King County has an easement, and the area allowed for trail development is quite confined. And construction easements will be necessary in those areas, and the conversations are
Back up five sheets to AL 31, please. A question regarding the, what would we call it, the access ramp?
Yes.
Would that be an apt descriptor?
Yes.
And in my notes, I think I called it the Lewis Thompson access ramp. Because I am, am I remembering correctly, the Lewis Thompson intersection's not shown, but we're right close to it, aren't we?
Very close.
Okay. Why was this particular location chosen, given that about 50% of it falls within the buffer of Wetland 26A and/or Wetland 26D? And that it's, the north end of it appears to be very close to unnamed stream number nine?
This is a very important access connection. And so dating back to the EIS, it was always envisioned to make an access point in this vicinity. As you go north, you get into some pretty steep terrain, and we're also hemmed in by critical areas just all up and down this stretch. So we chose the best possible area that does have buffer impacts but avoids other direct impacts to try and provide an ADA-compliant access point to Lewis Thompson Road.
And let's go back to AL 19. Between stations approximately 373 and 375, we have wetlands 23A and 23B, sandwiching the trail on both sides. Why the westerly shift? Why not expand equally and do equal intrusion into each wetland?
You have to look at, and I need to preface this because I would need to look at it in more detail, but if you look at Wetland 23A, what I can discern of it, it's fairly narrow. And so we kind of look at the configuration of the wetland when we're trying to make some of these decisions about how to align the trail between wetlands or which impacts to take. Has a lot to do, sometimes with the smaller, more narrow wetlands, if you go in and take a foot or two of it, you essentially are taking the entire wetland. But that's a judgment that our wetland biologists make.
I think I asked this before, but I'm, rather than take the time to plow through my notes and try and find it, I'll ask again. Are there any of these wetlands, especially the narrow linear ones on the upslope side of the trail, which would be the east side of the trail, that are artificially created as the result of the construction of the roadbed prism 100-plus years ago?
I can't speak to that. I only know that all of the wetlands that have been delineated meet the indicators for being identified as a wetland. I don't know the railroad history of their creation.
Okay. I think I asked, I'm pretty sure I asked this before. And the reason I ask is because there's an express exemption in the code from what's a regulated wetland for wetlands that were inadvertently created. I think it's by the construction of a road prior to something like 1990 or so. Clearly, this is way before 1990, 100 years or so.
Mr. Higginson.
And it goes back also, I remember asking the question about, can you dig out a ditch that runs through the middle of a wetland? Typically, I don't think the city rules encourage homeowners associations to go into the wetlands that have a water course that's demonstrably flowing through it and go in there with a track hoe and dig it out to let the water flow more freely. And yet apparently, that's what's done rather routinely to maintain drainage flow, especially, again, I think on that upslope side. And it just makes me sit here and think, are these real wetlands or are they wetlands that never should have been regulated in the first place? Then the whole dynamic of alignment changes, or could change. The raison d'etre for making choices, could 50% go away?
What I would add, though, is that the county is required to also comply with the state and federal regulations. So they have, we have to pay attention to the Washington Department of Ecology and
There were several comment letters, and I didn't write the numbers down. But as an example of what I'm going to ask you about, if we turn to sheet AL 15. And stair number 55.
What station?
Or stair 56 at 352.
Okay.
Or stair 59 at 359 on the next sheet. These are the parallel stairs, and I think you just told me you're going to shift that one stair that I was at, and number 81, I think, is going to shift into this configuration. There were a number of people, especially the ones in areas where, I think your term was the split lot, with the trail right-of-way going over a lot, and then there's ownership on both sides. I think a lot of the comments came from those folks, and they were saying, these stairs that go down parallel are going to make it extremely difficult for us as homeowners to be able to, like, to take a kayak or canoe and get it down the stairs. Because as I think I'm understanding what they're saying, they say, we got our kayak down, we walk across the trail, and all of a sudden, we got to do a 90-degree angle in the width of about three feet, assuming that the stairs are about three feet wide. Now, I haven't put a scale on them, but I'm guessing that's probably about it. And they say, that's a pain in the neck. You're going to make it very difficult for us to get our kayak and canoe down there. Now, I suppose if you're strong enough to put it over your head, that's not a problem. You just pivot around and go down. But if you're an old couple like me and my wife would be, I'd be on the stern, she'd be on the bow, and we're going to have a problem. That's what seems to be their complaint. Could you comment on that?
I can. If you look up and down the corridor, there's a lot of different access comments that the county has received, and it would be, in my mind, as a trail designer, unreasonable to design for every specific circumstance. And so what the county, in responding to public comments, has agreed to is if there's special circumstances or needs regarding access, the adjacent property owner can come back through and propose it via their special use permit process following construction. So the stairs are meant to provide an access without requiring the county to customize every single access to adjacent property owners' needs.
The shoreline rules have a process for revising a shoreline permit after it's been issued. You've mentioned several times in our dialogue this morning that things are changing for the 90% plans. Apparently, some designs have already been done, and like the stair 81, you told me, hey, it isn't going to be this way. What I'm looking at is not what you intend to build at all. It's going to be a different shaped stair. I'm trying to get a handle in my mind on the degree to which what I'm being asked to approve is what the county actually intends to build. How much, how squishy are the plans that I'm being asked to approve? Because my perception historically, in other jurisdictions, and again, over the 39 years that I've done this, is that a shoreline permit plan is not like a preliminary plat, which is by definition a neat and approximate drawing of a proposed subdivision. Albeit, in today's modern age with the computer technology, most preliminary plats are way beyond anything that you would call a neat and approximate drawing. They're pretty darn detailed these days. But I go back far enough, I remember preliminary plats drawn by hand without the precise lines that you see today. But still, the definition's there and the concept is there. I've always thought shoreline permit plans were more precise than that. And that what you see is what you get, except for engineering details. Like if the shoreline plan showed a sidewalk three feet wide and it needed to be four. Okay, it turns out it gets built four. But I'm hearing, you talked about, well, changes could occur because of settlement agreements. I don't even know what you're talking about. And I'm sitting here thinking, okay, I'm looking at this, I'm trying to judge the issues, and the city wants me to make you shrink this thing down, and you want me to make the city go away and not make you shrink it down? And I'm trying to understand the justifications for making you shrink it down or keeping you from shrinking it down? And then I'm hearing that things are squishy, and maybe what's going to get built ain't what I'm looking at anyway, so who cares? The last part is sort of my reaction to what the position I'm finding myself in. Talk to me about that.
You bet. So I would point out that a lot of the things that we've talked about today that will change, utilities, finding these drain pipes, don't affect the trail footprint. So I really want to emphasize, the trail footprint at 60% is mostly set. On South Semamish Segment A on 1A, when I referred to the settlement agreements, there were nine conditions, I believe, that the city placed on the shoreline permit. And the shoreline permit was appealed. And in conjunction with that appeal process, the city and the county settled on, I think it was Conditions 4 and 7, but I could be wrong. But it had to do with narrowing some clearing and grading limits to preserve trees in a couple of places. So that's what I mean by settlement agreements. It was very much part of the shoreline process that those changes occurred. But the trail footprint itself isn't changing. Things like staircases, some of the driveway intersections, the grading will be refined a little bit. Those are ancillary to that trail footprint itself, which is largely set.
So the settlement agreements in 2A, that's what you're talking about, right?
Right.
Segment 2A?
2A, yes.
They were through the appeals process before the hearings board, which is another full-blown quasi, at least could be a full-blown quasi-judicial open record hearing. De novo, no less.
Okay.
Which means they ignore all four days of what we've done. There is, in Exhibit 97, a 2014 settlement agreement in a court case known as Stinson versus King County. And I don't know whether you're the person who could answer this or not, you may not be able to. But the question is, does that settlement agreement apply to Segment 2B?
I can't answer that question.
Here's a question without a reference, and I hate to do that to you. Because I don't even remember where it is either in the record. A comment from William Way. And you may just remember it because of who it is, who it was from. He commented about Stream 0143L and mitigation associated with it. And my question just says, please have King County respond to the William Way comment regarding Stream 0143L and mitigation. And I'm afraid I can't offhand quickly tell you what exhibit number his comment is.
Right, I did take a look at his comment. Stream 0143L is up at the north end of 2B, and there are two forks to it. There's a north fork and a south fork. And on one of those forks, we are proposing a fish passage improvement already. And looking at the other fork, there were some constraints to it that didn't make it an ideal candidate for improvement. And so I would refer you, do you have a list of the exhibits? I believe the appropriate exhibits are 57 and 58, which have to do with the analysis that led to the eight culverts that we did propose for fish passage improvements.
Okay. So it's because of too many problems on the one fork to make it worth putting a fish passage culvert under, fish passage culvert under the trail?
Correct.
Because they'd get under the trail and then have nowhere to go, essentially.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. Here's a question, which I put a question mark beside, and I'm not quite it may mean I wasn't sure I wanted to ask it after I wrote it down. I don't know, but I'm going to ask it anyway. It refers to Exhibit 75. And Exhibit 75. Let's see. In Exhibit 75, the third and fourth pages of that exhibit are a document entitled East Lake Sammamish Trail Fencing Guidelines, marked "Updated August 23 of '01." So this document would be like 16-plus years old. It apparently comes from King County. I say "apparently," there's no letterhead on it, but it does mention DNRP, Department of Natural Resources and Parks. And it says, "These are fencing guidelines that are going to be used during the development of the trail." My question is, are these still current? Or am I looking at something that's woefully out of date here?
I suspect it's woefully out of date, but I'm not familiar with this document.
Okay. Mr. Overton have more knowledge of that when his term comes?
If I can make an editorial comment, as the chief designer for the trail, if she's not familiar with the document, I think we can say it's out of date and was not applied here.
Okay, well, if I want, I could ask Mr. Overton.
Absolutely.
Okay. Okay. I think that's it in terms of questions that I might have for Ms. Bailey. Thank you much.
I ask for a short break, five, just five minutes.
Okay, five-minute recess. We'll reconvene at 10 o'clock on the clock on the wall. Okay, let's retake our seats so we can pick up again. The hearing is back in order. Ms. Fleming?
Thank you. King County calls Frank Overton.
Mr. Overton, you were sworn, I think, way back on day one, so you remain under oath.
Yes.
Good morning. Questions were raised regarding the accuracy of the survey that was submitted as part of the permit application. And are you familiar with the survey work that was done for this project and submitted to the city?
Yes, I am.
And based on your experience with you, which you testified to previously managing construction projects, is the survey for this project accurate and comprehensive?
Yes, it is. I mean, it's probably more comprehensive than any other survey that we provide at this level of design and for these land use decisions.
Okay. Now, questions were asked during the hearing by Mr. Hearing Examiner about what changes can take place after approval of the shoreline permit. As the land use approval, what is your understanding of what the shoreline permit is approving?
It's approving the footprint and the use.
And generally, what kinds of details are added after approval of the shoreline permit?
Those are basically construction details, instructions, specifications. I mean, there are like steel details, fine tuning, handrails, and those type of things, elevations of, at intersections to make sure cars don't bottom out. I mean, I think Jess, our design consultant, kind of addressed that in much detail.
So Mr. Hearing Examiner asked a question about how the county views its authority to change the design after issuance of the shoreline permit. And what is the county's understanding of what design changes can occur after approval of this permit?
Well, all of the conditions that the city place, I mean, we would look at those and address whether or not we need to make design changes to meet them if we agreed with them. It's basically, outside of the footprint, we wouldn't be making any changes. They'd be mostly to the details and the constructability.
So is your understanding that the shoreline permit process authorizes the footprint and the use?
That's correct.
Okay. Now, the shoreline permit application is submitted. An opportunity is given for public comment based on the 60% plans. Is it your understanding that the reason the public comment opportunity is at the 60% plans and not the 100% or 90% plans, is it your understanding that that opportunity is provided at that juncture so that comments can be made and changes can be incorporated into the plans in response to those comments?
Yes, I think that's the whole purpose of the public comment process, is to allow for changes to the plans.
And indeed, here, Ms. Bailey testified about changes to the plans. And is it your understanding that changes to the plans were made in response to public comments?
All the changes that are made, besides the construction details, are made in response to public comments.
All right. Now
And/or city comments.
Okay. Now, I want to ask you about utilities, because the question of utilities were raised in this hearing. There are many utilities and utility crossings within the trail corridor. How are utilities identified?
So, I mean, there's a pretty thorough process of going through and identifying things that are observed in the field, searches of public records. We use what's called a design locate, where we use the utility locate service, and we pay, in this case, to have somebody go out and mark utilities so we can get the exact location surveyed. In some extreme cases, if we can't find it at, you know, between 60 and 90, we will go and pothole for the utilities. And we always provide a bid item in our contract, with our contractor for potholing, should it necessitate, you know, going out and doing that during construction.
Can you explain what that means? What does potholing mean?
Well, potholing, you either physically dig with a shovel or backhoe, or you use what's called a vector, and you use suction, air and water, to get the soil loose enough that it gets sucked up, and you basically create a pothole down so you can locate the utility.
Okay, so you said you use design locate, you review public records?
Mm-hmm.
And you observe? Okay. What other methods or means do you use to locate utilities?
Well, we'll notify adjoining property owners to locate their service lines, because, you know, basically, under the state law, we follow the law, and the owners of underground utilities are supposed to locate them when asked, so.
Okay. So you use letters to notify homeowners asking for information regarding the location of their utilities?
That's correct.
Okay. And you also review and listen to public comments, is that right?
Yes, that's correct. During the public comment process and during this hearing, we've been taking lots of notes about where people have said there are utilities.
Okay. And what happens to utilities during construction? How does the county ensure protection of utilities?
Well, I mean, we've done a whole process up to date of trying to identify where they are, and then where they're shown on the plans, and we require the contractor to protect them. And again, we have an item for potholing that we use quite frequently. We spend a substantial amount of dollars doing potholing during construction to make sure of the exact location and they're not disturbed.
Okay.
If there are unknown ones, then we lower those or make adjustments to those.
Okay, so are undocumented utilities during construction, are they located? What happens when they're located?
Well, if possible, they're lowered down to the appropriate depth as required by the railroad. A lot of utilities are put in without our knowledge or in the past, the railroad's knowledge. So we do our best to get them to the required depth. We may put a, some sort of protection that's required by the railroad. Because this is a rail bank corridor, so we have to do that.
Okay, and do you add required protective casings?
Yes, that's the protection that's required under the railroad.
Okay. And did, were the utilities in the corridor, both the documented and undocumented utilities, were they protected during construction of the north segment and Segment A?
Yes, they were.
Okay. I want to ask you a couple of specific questions about docks. We heard comments from residents concerned about access to docks. Do the project plans for Segment B continue to allow access to docks adjacent to the East Lake Sammamish Trail?
Yes, they do allow for continued access to the docks.
Do the project plans provide for removal of any docks?
No, we are not removing any docks under this project.
Do they, are they, are the docks a part of this project in any way?
No, they are not.
During the public comment process, Mr. Crowe, Mr. Parrott, and Mr. Beish all raised issues about their access to docks. Does this project affect their access to docks?
No, it does not affect their access to their docks.
We also heard comments from residents concerned about access to the beach club. Do the project plans for Segment B continue to allow access to the beach club?
Yes.
And is the beach club a part of this process in any way?
It's not part of this project in any way.
I want to ask you a couple of questions about gates. Mr. Hearing Examiner, in reference to Exhibit 68, Bates Number 5795. In that exhibit, public comment, there was an adjacent property owner who asked to install a gate at Staircase 45, and the response was, "King County will not typically be installing gates, and neighbors who want to construct fences for privacy or security should do so at the property line." Can you explain King County's position with regard to gates?
Well, I mean, gates are provided for, to prevent the public, gates that are provided to prevent the public from accessing the public's property or from preventing us from maintenance crews getting down to our property to maintain our property, they're not going to be allowed. In some instances, we'll allow gates where people have a special use permit and that they are paying for the use of that property, the public property, then we would probably allow that. But that would be done through the special use process, so they can ask for that after construction. Any type of safety hazard, you know, where we don't want, you know, as we move from 60 to 90, we've been looking at safety hazards real closely, whether or not we want people to be down below, whether there's an unsafe condition like a ravine or something like that, that we don't want them using that property down below. So we, some of those cases, we'll install gates. If there's a water hazard, any safety reason, a fall hazard, we are for sure putting fences and gates when we identify those, or when people make comments about that during this process.
Okay, let me, just to follow up on what you said. Will private property owners who have stairs leading from the trail down to their home and to nothing else, so no other property, no other public property is accessible, will those homeowners be allowed to install and potentially lock a gate if they pay the appropriate fees to the county?
Yes. And most likely, we'll try to get that as close to the property line as possible.
Okay, so
But you can't put a stair on it, you can't put a gate on a stair, it has to be in a landing, so we'll find the closest landing.
Okay, so just so we're clear, is the county's intention to ensure that public property that is usable, that is available as part of this trail project, is accessible to the public?
That's correct. We get a lot of comments about being able to access the county's public property.
Okay. And is the county's intention to allow private property owners who have stairs that only go to their residence to install a gate if they pay the fees for use of county property?
That's correct.
Okay.
May I ask him a question to stay on the subject before you move on?
Yes.
I think there's a fair number of places along the trail, especially on the downslope west side, where within the public right-of-way, within, within the railroad right-of-way. Let me try and stay out of the legalisms here. Property owners have made physical improvements, lawns, landscaping, parking, little raised decks, docks, et cetera. Are, are you saying that the county would not allow any fencing, or any gates in the fences to keep trail users off those privately built things? I'm trying to stay away from how they got there, or when they got there, or under what authority they got there. That's for the courts to decide, I think. But are you saying the county would no longer keep trail users from getting to these things?
There's a process for special use permits. If they want to pay and pay for that property and use it, there's a property process that the county has in place. This part of this project is not to put gates on it, because what happens is our maintenance crews can't get down to take care of our retaining walls or our fences or any of that stuff, so.
Thank you.
And I don't have any other questions.
Oh, I thought you said he was going to testify for two hours.
Cut it short.
Don't I remember that?
I
I do remember that. Everybody's nodding yes.
Okay.
Do you want me to testify for two hours?
Well, I don't know.
Thank you.
I'm just shocked. Well, that, if that's the case, maybe I have some more questions. Because I deferred some question, King County questions, because I was looking for the right witness, and I think maybe you're it. Is King County, this is the start of my question.
Okay.
Is King County essentially taking the position that anything within the right-of-way may be removed and not replaced by the county if it isn't there pursuant to a special use permit?
I think that's a legal question about property rights and stuff, so I'm going to defer to our legal team, so.
Okay. And follow-ons to that And follow-ons to that would be, is it, is there a difference if a special use permit has been issued? Is it a different answer if the improvement was installed prior to the time that King County acquired the property? Again, assuming, arguendo, that King County has title to the property. And I'm trying to stay out of that.
I think those are all legal questions that don't properly.
Okay. And I guess this is, you're going to give me the same answer, but I'll ask it because it gets it out there for Ms. Fleming to write down. Is this statement correct? Improvements built or installed within the right-of-way by property owners at their cost pursuant to a King County-issued special use permit may be removed by King County, after which the owners may apply to King County to rebuild the thing, whatever it was, again at the owner's own cost? That's a long, convoluted question.
Again, I think that's a legal property question, so.
Okay. Oh, the fencing guidelines, Exhibit 75, I said I was going to ask you. Remember the third and fourth pages in Exhibit 75? The fencing guidelines from, I think it's August of '01, are they still applicable?
That's the first time I've seen them, and I've been here for three years, so.
So as far as you know, they're not?
As far as I know, they're not.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have any other questions?
I'm not sure. This is my last chance, so I need to be sure. I think that is it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Overton. Now, that's King County's witnesses that we needed today, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So now let's shift gears and go to the county, excuse me, the city. Ms. Pratt, you had a witness you wanted us to hear today.
Yes. Charles Alexander is here to testify for the city.
Okay. And you put on our table this morning a copy of his CV.
Yes.
Would you like to have that entered into the record?
Yes, please.
Okay. We will enter Mr. Alexander's curriculum vitae, excuse me, as Exhibit 114. Presuming you're Mr. Alexander, would you turn your mic on, bring it up close, and raise your right hand, please, sir? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you'll be offering in this hearing will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you. Please state your name and tell us how to spell it.
My name is Charles Alexander, A-L-E-X-A-N-D-E-R.
Thank you very much. Your witness, Ms. Pratt, you can Q and A him or let him, let him loose or whatever.
I'm going to let him loose, Mr. Examiner, and he has a PowerPoint presentation that he's going to be using, and I'm going to pass out hard copies. So if you don't have a good view of the screen, it will be easier to see.
Thank you. We will enter paper copy of Mr. Alexander's PowerPoint as Exhibit 115. Thank you much.
Mr. Alexander is also going to be referring to several exhibits that already are in the record during his presentation, and then he has several new ones. Would you prefer we enter each exhibit as he goes along or just all at the end?
I think the county might find it more helpful if they had copies of them available when he starts talking about them. So I would alter that and give you the choice. You can either have him offer them as he goes along, or we can just number them all right now, put them in, and then he can refer to them by exhibit number as he goes.
Okay.
Either of those, fine with me.
Why don't we do the latter then, and we'll just number them all now if that's.
Okay.
Okay. We already have this one.
The following documents are entered into the record with exhibit numbers as I read them. Exhibit 116 is entitled Regional Data Profile. Exhibit 117 is a three-page excerpt from something entitled Direct Demand Models. It's pages 56 through 58 of something. I know that sounds weird, but there's no attribution on the document as to what it is.
So I'm sorry, which one is that?
Regional Demand Models. It's a two-column.
Direct Demand Models.
Did I say, Direct Demand Models? I apologize. Direct Demand Models.
I don't think I have that one.
You have one that looks like this? No?
Yep.
Okay. Got it now? This is Exhibit 117. Don't we already have this?
I could not find the one dated June 20th, 2017.
Well, at the risk of having two in the record, two's better than none. Mr. Schultes' is June 20, 2017. Memo is entered as Exhibit 118. Exhibit 119 is, says, it's from a policy on geometric design of highways and streets. I'm going to guess that it's probably Ashdod, but it doesn't say. It's pages 2-46 and 2-47. That's Exhibit 119. Exhibit 120 is, looks like slides from some kind of PowerPoint. Which is the first page of this? This one? The type, the text? Okay. That makes more sense.
It says August 10th, 2012 on the top.
That makes more sense. I was looking at it the other way first. August 10, 2012, Notes from a Presentation. It's Exhibit 120. Exhibit 121 is page, pages 1-1 and 1-2 from a chapter entitled Introduction. And it looks, it's the Ashdod Guide for Bicycle Facilities, Fourth Edition. Exhibit 122 is a WashDOT, that's Washington State Department of Transportation. WashDOT Context-Sensitive Solutions, it's a secretary's executive order, number E1028.02. Two-page document. And Exhibit Number 123 is pages 13 through, well, 13 through 28 and two, three unnumbered sides. It appears to be Chapter 3 or Section 3 from some document. Again, the name is not on the header or footer, so it's pages from a document called LOS for Shared Use Paths. That's the best I can do. Okay. We now have Exhibits through 123.
I'm sorry.
And I would hope that Mr. Alexander, as he rolls along and refers to these, might give us the, the source of the ones that's not intuitively obvious. Ms. Fleming?
Sorry. I got a little bit mixed up here, so.
Okay.
Exhibit 120 is the one with the slide. Is that right?
Exhibit 120 is the one that has the, the green.
Okay.
Things.
And what's, what's 121?
121 is what I think is an Ashdod Guide page.
Got it. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Again, he's your witness. You said you, what, wanted to just let him loose?
Yes. And his presentation should be about 45 minutes without questions, so after that.
Okay.
Great.
Go ahead, sir.
So please stop me with any questions. First, I briefly want to describe my background, which is summarized in my CV. I am a professional engineer in Washington. I have worked for Farr and Pierce, a national transportation planning and engineering firm for over 10 years, and am currently located in our Denver, Colorado office. My professional experience includes the planning and design of on-street bikeways, trails, and walkways. My recent project experience includes the design of protected bike lanes in Denver, as well as the development of Denver Moves: Pedestrians and Trails, the city's long-range plan for trails, which included the development of design guidelines for new trails. Lastly, I have spent much of my career as an instructor to graduate students and other professionals. I have been an adjunct lecturer of pedestrian and bicycle planning through the Masters of Urban Planning Program at the University of Colorado, Denver. I am also an instructor of complete streets through a continuing education program at the University of California, Berkeley, and also through the National Complete Streets Coalition. Complete Streets is an approach to transportation network planning and design that recognizes that we should plan and design for all modes of transportation and for all ages and abilities. My presentation will make five key points focused in three areas. First, user volume forecasts for the trail. Second, the Ashdod Guide for the Development of Bicycle Facilities, or Ashdod Bike Guide for short. And third, context-sensitive design. For each key point, I will provide supporting evidence. And I can't tell if you have the slides on your screen or if you'd like me to.
I do.
Okay. So I don't have to tell you when to change them?
No.
Starting with the user volume forecasts, my first key point is that there are still aspects of the user volume forecasts that defy engineering judgment and that do not conform to accepted guidelines. At least three iterations of user volume forecasts have been produced through the history of this project. Most recently, the county provided an amended East Lake Samamish Trail Demand Analyses memo on November 16, 2017. Believe we entered this in the record as King County Exhibit 113. That memo includes this table. This table shows various user volume forecasts at two different locations on the East Lake Samamish Trail, at Inglewood Hill Road and at 190th Place Southeast. For each location, 2017, 2030, and 2040 user volume forecasts are provided. The year and location are shown in the left-most highlighted column. The, the highest annual hourly volume is shown in the middle highlighted column, and the 30th-highest hourly volume is shown in the right-most highlighted column. Neither the highest annual hourly volume nor the 30th-highest hourly volume change between 2017 and 2040. This is despite population forecasts from the Puget Sound Regional Council that show the region growing from 4.2 million residents to 4.9 million residents from 2020 to 2040, a 17% increase. This is called out in Exhibit 116. This lack of sensitivity to population change is primarily due to the variables selected for the direct demand model, which do not conform to accepted guidelines, namely National Cooperative Highway Research Program, NCHRP for short, Report 770, the same guideline cited in Mr. Schultes' testimony. Colleagues of mine at Farr and Pierce contributed to this report, including the section on direct demand models. The county's forecasts relied on a direct demand model. This is the definition of a direct demand model according to NCHRP 770, and that's the document that Exhibit 117 came from. Their structure is to explain observed levels of bicycle or pedestrian activity on facilities, links, or intersections points as recorded through counts using a range of factors that describe local context. This is usually done using regression modeling techniques with the calibrated models then applied back on all or a subset of the sampled system of intersections or links to assess their accuracy. their accuracy in replicating choices. In simple words, direct demand models are regression equations where the regression is a correlation between observed count data and data that describes the local context. These are the context variables often used in direct demand models according to NCHRP 770. These variables include population or employment densities, population or employment activity levels within a nominal buffer distance, land use mix, characteristics of the facility, interaction with vehicle traffic, transit availability, and major generators. These are the same variables from NCHRP 770, with some in red if they were included, in the county's highest annual hourly volume model as described in the East Lake Semamish Trail Demand Analyses memo dated June 20, 2017. We entered this as Exhibit 118. The model used, I'm sorry, the model used three variables. First, demographic characteristics of the catchment area, which was presumably applied as a percentage rather than a population number since the forecasts do not change from 2017 to 2040. This is problematic because people create trail use, not a percentage of people. Second, the trail experience variable, which is most consistent with the characteristics of the facility variable from NCHRP 770. And third, miles of trail in the catchment area, which does not specifically align with any variables often used according to NCHRP 770.
Could I interrupt just for a minute?
Yes.
Will you be, you're reading from a script, and that's perfectly fine. Will you be willing to provide me with a copy of that after you're through?
Okay. Yeah.
Okay. Great. Because my note-taking is getting rather chaotic here. And if I know I'm getting the text, I'm much happier. Go ahead.
Am I going too fast?
No. Now that I know that I'm going to get the text, you're not going too fast at all.
Okay. Great. The model omits several variables often used according to NCHRP 770. This is explained in the amended East Lake Semamish Trail Demand Analyses memo dated November 16, 2017, again, King County Exhibit 113. I quote from that document. "Population in the trail catchment area was not found to be a significant predictor of that particular aggregation of trail volumes." Here, they're referring to the highest annual hourly volume forecast. They go on. "This is not to say that population density does not influence peak hour trail volumes, but that with a sample of data available at the time that the modeling was conducted, other variables were more predictive of peak hour volumes." Basically, this suggests that the modelers were unable to draw a strong correlation between the observed highest annual hourly count data and variables often used according to NCHRP 770. The modelers therefore relied on the best correlated variables, omitting variables with a logical causal relationship. This demonstrates a common issue in statistics, correlation without causation. The East Lake Semamish Trail Demand Analyses memo dated November 16, 2017 goes on to say this. "The fact that the projected peak hour volume forecasts, which exceed 300 bicyclists per hour, do not depend explicitly on population growth, makes them worse overly conservative. Likewise, the fact that the forecast volumes do not take into account improvements in bicycle network connectivity and the light rail extension to downtown Redmond, despite these being known strong predictors of bicyclists and pedestrian activity, again, makes all of the forecast values more conservative. This statement is inconsistent with how direct demand models work in the county's statements regarding the model's development in two ways. Again, direct demand models are regression equations where the regression is a correlation between observed count data and data that describes the local context. The observed count data reflects a variety of trip purposes: people biking to work, people biking to transit, people biking to school, people recreating, et cetera. Forecasts from direct demand models therefore inherently reflect the variety of trip purposes captured by the observed count data, such as people biking to transit. Also, including additional variables such as population, bicycle network connectivity, and transit access, and the regression does not automatically increase forecasts. Shown in blue are two sample regression equations, one with three variables on the top, similar to the county's model, and another with four variables on the bottom, in this case where population is added as the fourth variable, which the county did not do. Each regression equation has the same basic algebraic structure, bear with me here for a minute. The forecast equals the natural exponential function, that's e raised to the power of, of the sum of each variable multiplied by its coefficient. Regression establishes the coefficients, in this case X, Y, and Z, A, B, C, and D. That coefficient is multiplied by the variable value at the forecast location. For example, in the bottom equation, the coefficient developed through regression, d, is multiplied by the population within one-half mile of the trail, so on and so forth for each of the coefficients and variables. It is important to note that every time a new variable is added to the regression, the coefficients for the other variables change. In this example, in the regression equation with three variables on top, those three variables have coefficients X, Y, and Z. When you add a new variable, such as population, as shown in the regression equation with four variables on the bottom, the coefficients for the already tested variables change. In this case, X is not necessarily equal to A, Y is not necessarily equal to B, and Z is not necessarily equal to C. For these reasons, it is inaccurate to suggest that including population, bicycle network connectivity, and transit access variables would automatically increase the user volume forecasts. It's just as likely that the 2040 user volume forecast may be similar to what was already predicted, whereas the 2017 and 2030 user volume forecasts may be reduced. My next key point is this. Even if we accept the user volume forecast as is, the 30th-highest hourly volume forecasts are right at the 300 users per hour threshold, not two or three times the threshold, but exactly at the threshold. In the county's testimony, it was suggested that the 30th-highest hourly volume is an appropriate design volume. I agree with the suggestion, and the suggestion is consistent with other guidance from Ashdod, in this case, a policy on geometric design of highways and streets. We call this the Ashdod Green Book for short. We included this as Exhibit 119. That book states, "It is recommended that the hourly traffic volume that should generally be used in design is the 30th-highest hourly volume." Again, here is the same table from the amended East Lake Semamish Trail Demand Analyses memo from November 16, 2017, Exhibit 113, which shows user volume forecasts at Inglewood Hill Road and 190th Place Southeast in 2017, 2030, and 2040. The 30th-highest hourly volume is shown in the right-most highlighted column. The county's consultant used the relationship between the highest annual hourly volume and the 30th-highest hourly volume at observed trail count locations to estimate the 30th-highest hourly volume on the East Lake Semamish Trail Segment 2B. They found that the 30th-highest hourly volume is 300 users per hour at 190th Place Southeast, an approximate midpoint of Segment 2B. This is exactly the recommended threshold for trail widening in the Ashdod Bike Guide. In all of the county's previous analysis through June 20, 2017, this location had been identified as the location representative of Segment 2B. The 340 users per hour forecast near Inglewood Hill Road at the north end of Segment 2B is obviously higher than the 300 users per hour, but it is in the ballpark of the 300 users per hour number, and I will address this separately when I discuss the Ashdod Bike Guide and context-sensitive design. What's important to recognize is that neither of these numbers are close to the 600 to 700 users per hour numbers, the highest annual hourly volumes shown in the middle highlighted column, previously used by the county to suggest the trail widening is necessary. My third key point is that the Ashdod Bike Guide uses specific language to make it clear when the guidelines are flexible and inflexible. From Mr. Schultes's testimony, it can be concluded, it could be concluded that he was the only contributing author to the Ashdod Bike Guide. I know that he was a contributing author on behalf of the project team, which is admirable. However, it is important to recognize that the Ashdod Bike Guide is written through a committee process. This committee process includes a panel of experts through the National Cooperative Highway Research Program process, again, NCHRP for short. Professionals representing many organizations review and comment on the language included in this guide. The guide is developed this way to ensure a high degree of consensus in the guide's recommendations. On the right, this slide shows the NCHRP panel of 12 people that oversaw the Ashdod Bike Guide's development. This was included in Exhibit 120. This slide is from an August 10, 2012 webinar sponsored by the Pedestrian and Bicycle Information Center, an FHWA-sponsored research center at the University of North Carolina. That webinar was entitled "Ashdod Bike Guide: Overview of Revised Ashdod Guide for the Development of Bicycle Facilities." I will also point out that Matthew Ridgway, a member of the project team in the left column, is a principal at my firm, Farr &amp; Peers. Jennifer Tool, the principal investigator for the Ashdod Bike Guide and the founder and president of Tool Design Group, Mr. Schultes's employer, delivered much of this webinar, including the introductory slides. In this webinar, Ms. Tool states that, quote, "We launched the preparation of the content of the fourth edition, and that was overseen by a panel of experts." Here, she is referring to the Ashdod Bike Guide. She continues, "Folks from all over the United States were involved, from all different kinds of backgrounds. Simply stated, the words in the Ashdod Bike Guide are chosen for a reason, and those words matter. Those words are chosen by a panel of experts so that the Ashdod Bike Guide can be clearly applied by professionals throughout the United States. The panel of experts do not write the Ashdod Bike Guide in a way such that its participating authors are required to opine as to how the guide's language was intended to apply when otherwise unwritten in the guide. I understand that Mr. Schultes's testimony suggested that because Ashdod design guidelines are adopted by the city of Semamish as standards, there is less flexibility in applying these guidelines. This is not true. In that same webinar, Ms. Tool also explained that the guide is written as a set of guidelines and that those guidelines provide flexibility. She states, "I do want to point out that this is a guideline. It is not a standard, and that's, I think, a very important thing to understand. The Bike Guide does not use words like shall or must. It uses words like should or may, and so there is a lot of flexibility in the design guidance it provides. So if a city adopts these guidelines as their standard, as Semamish has done, they also inherently adopt the flexibility provided within those guidelines as their standard." My fourth key point. Based on the user volume forecasts and the flexibility provided by the Ashdod Bike Guide's language, it is consistent with the Ashdod Bike Guide to build a 12-foot paved trail where physical constraints do not exist. However, it is also consistent with the Ashdod Bike Guide to build a narrower trail where physical constraints do exist. Again, the words of the Ashdod Bike Guide are chosen for a reason, and these words matter. These words are chosen by a panel of experts so that the Ashdod Bike Guide can be clearly applied by professionals throughout the United States, and these words are chosen carefully to make it clear what level of flexibility is available to designers. Here is what the Ashdod Bike Guide says about trail width. My own emphasis is added. Ashdod Bike Guide, Chapter 5, was included as King County Exhibit 70.1, and this is located on page 5-3 of the Ashdod Bike Guide. "The minimum paved width for a two-directional shared-use path is 10 feet. This is a relatively inflexible statement. With no more information about a trail's user volume, user profile, or physical constraints, a 10-foot trail is consistent with the Ashdod Bike Guide. A path width of 8 feet may be used for a short distance due to a physical constraint such as an environmental feature, bridge abutment, utility structure, fence, and such. This is a flexible statement. It is up to the designers to determine what qualifies as a short distance or as a physical constraint, and the list of physical constraints is left open-ended with the words 'and such.' A trail width of 8 feet is consistent with the Ashdod Bike Guide in these circumstances, independent of its volume. Wider pathways, 11 to 14 feet, are recommended in locations that are anticipated to serve a high percentage of pedestrians, 30% or more of the total pathway volume, and high user volumes, more than 300 total users in the peak hour. This is a flexible statement. Wider trails are recommended in this situation. However, this recommendation does not supersede the other guidance for trail width. It does not mean that trail widths of less than 11 feet in these circumstances are inconsistent with the guide. The guide's panel of experts could have decided to make an inflexible statement, such as, "The minimum paved width for a two-directional shared-use path with high user volumes is 12 feet," but they did not. This language is included this way so that a narrower trail can be built where physical constraints exist and still be consistent with Ashdod guidelines, a point made in Mr. Schultes's testimony that I agree with. Again, the words in the Ashdod Bike Guide are selected by a panel of experts for a reason, and those words matter. Based on his testimony, Mr. Schultes and I both agree that a narrower trail is justified when physical constraints exist, independent of its volume. However, where we disagree is on the definition of physical constraints. In his testimony, Mr. Schultes suggested that the intended interpretation of physical constraints is those that are, and I quote, "really challenging to move, really expensive, a property line that you can't purchase the land, and a wetland with no way to mitigate." The guide and its panel of experts could have decided to say these things, however, they chose to say none of these things. Instead, the guide states, "A path width of 8 feet may be used for a short distance due to a physical constraint such as an environmental feature, bridge abutment, utility structure, fence, and such. This leaves it to design professionals to judge for themselves, through a context-sensitive design process, what constitutes a physical constraint." They did not provide such specificity regarding physical constraints to leave room for flexibility. A reason for this is explained in the introduction to the Ashdod Bike Guide, which is included as Exhibit 121. The guide states, "Sufficient flexibility is permitted to encourage designs that are sensitive to local context and to incorporate the needs of bicyclists, pedestrians, and motorists." So, that flexibility is provided so that we, as professionals, can design in a way that is sensitive to local context. Context is a broad term, but certainly includes aspects of the environment and property. The guide goes on to say. However, in some sections of the guide, suggested minimum dimensions are provided. These are recommended only where further deviation from desirable values could increase crash frequency or severity. So, we must take seriously the interpretation and application of minimum dimensions as written in the guide. The amount of flexibility given by the guide's language is an indication of how much deviating from desirable values is likely to result in safety issues. That's why it's relatively inflexible in regards to 10-foot widths, with the exception for 8-foot widths in short distances, but is more flexible when it recommends wider trails when user volumes are high. Which brings me to my last point. A context-sensitive design process would conclude that the trail can be narrowed without causing disproportionate safety effects. Additionally, accepted guidelines support widening only selected trail segments and widening in 1-foot rather than 2-foot increments. First, it's helpful to provide a definition for context-sensitive design. In this case, I will rely on a definition of context-sensitive solutions, effectively the same thing, from the Washington Department of Transportation. This is included in Exhibit 122. In a Secretary's Executive Order, they define context-sensitive solutions as follows. "Its essence is that a proposed transportation project must be planned not only for its physical aspects, as a facility serving specific transportation objectives, but also for its effects on the aesthetic, social, economic, and environmental values, needs, constraints, and opportunities in a larger community setting." Again, in its introduction, the Ashdod Bike Guide states that "sufficient flexibility is permitted to encourage designs that are sensitive to local context." I understand that Mr. Schultes's testimony took the position that a statement I made is not an engineering opinion because it cannot be verified with data or analysis. This statement is from my September 25, 2017 letter, which reviewed the trail demand analyses and the trail width. I stated, "As engineers, we strive to design facilities to meet guidelines whenever possible. However, it frequently occurs that meeting all desirable guidelines comes at a great cost and results in other impacts, including to private property, environmental resources, or other resources." or other resources. When this occurs, we make case-by-case decisions whereby we weigh the costs, dollars, property, environment, et cetera, against the risks, safety, level of service, et cetera." This may not be an opinion that can be verified with data or analysis, but if you speak with a number of reasonable, experienced engineers, you will hear that this is an inherent part of a context-sensitive design process and that this is a reality to applying flexible design guidelines within an imperfect world full of constraints. They would probably add a few important details. First, we often do this through an alternatives analysis process so we can understand the relative costs and risks. Second, engineers do not make these decisions in a vacuum. Instead, we work with other experts to understand costs and risks to other resources, such as the environment and property. Third, safety is paramount in all of the decisions that we make. When I say paramount, I mean that we do not make any engineering decisions without first considering the safety effects of that decision. As engineers, applying flexible design guidelines within an imperfect world full of constraints often means that marginally less safe options are chosen so as to not create disproportionate impacts to other resources. However, we obviously design to avoid instances whereby not impacting those resources, we will create a disproportionately negative safety effect. As a part of this context-sensitive design process, it is helpful to estimate trail level of service to inform whether or not narrowing the trail is creating disproportionately negative safety effects. For this analysis, I'm using the Shared Use Path Level of Service Calculator referenced by the Ashdod Bike Guide and by Mr. Schultes in his testimony. I agree with Mr. Schultes's testimony that this calculator is an appropriate resource. This calculator uses six levels of service categories and the letters A through F to represent them, from best to worst. However, Mr. Schultes omitted several important details in the Shared Use Path Level of Service Calculator that are important to point out. The Shared Use Path Level of Service Calculator Users' Guide, which I included as Exhibit 123, that's the one that starts with LOS for shared-use paths, that document states the following in describing its methodology. "Maintaining an optimum speed for the bicyclist is a key criterion. Service measures are primarily related to freedom to maneuver. These include meetings, active passes, delayed passes, and the perceived ability to pass. Safety is not included in the set of measures that establish service levels." To be clear, the methodology does not measure safety itself. It primarily measures bicyclist speed and freedom to maneuver, which is represented by the percentage of delayed passings that a bicyclist experiences on a trail segment. For example, if you were riding your bike on a trail and wanted to pass a slower bicyclist but had to slow down and wait because of oncoming users or limited space, you are experiencing a delayed passing. It is reasonable to suggest that bicyclist freedom to maneuver is a proxy for certain safety issues. However, there is no commonly accepted threshold for how much change in bicyclist freedom to maneuver constitutes a substantial safety effect. That is subject to engineering judgment. The Shared Use Path Level of Service Calculator Users' Guide also provides guidance for how to interpret level of service grades. LOSA is excellent. The trail has optimum conditions for individual bicyclists. Level of Service C is fair. The trail has at least minimum width to meet current demand. Level of Service D is poor. The trail is nearing its functional capacity. Level of Service E is very poor. The trail has reached its functional capacity. Level of Service F is failing. Trail significantly diminishes the experience for at least one and most likely for all user groups. Note that Level of Service D is described as a trail nearing its functional capacity, and Level of Service E is a trail at its functional capacity. It is not until Level of Service F that a trail is described as failing. It is critical to understand how the 300 users per hour threshold identified in the Ashdod Bike Guide relates to trail level of service. To better understand this relationship, I ran some calculations using the calculator available from FHWA's website. Those were also included, let's see, those were included as a technical appendix in Exhibit 123. Here are three scenarios that help us define the relationship between user volumes and level of service. In this table, I state my assumptions regarding trail width and user volume in the second column. The third column shows the percent of delayed passings experienced by bicyclists on the trail. The fourth column shows the resulting level of service. Each of the trails on this slide are 10 feet wide. The first trail has 190 users per hour. This results in Level of Service C and 66% delayed passings. This is the threshold between Level of Service C and Level of Service D, which means that adding user volume to the trail will change the level of service from Level of Service C to Level of Service D. The second trail has 310 users per hour. This results in Level of Service D and 82% delayed passings. This is the threshold between Level of Service D and Level of Service E. The third trail has 320 users per hour. This results in Level of Service E and 83% delayed passings. This shows that we have passed the threshold from Level of Service D to Level of Service E. This analysis shows that the 300 users per hour recommended in the Ashdod Bike Guide corresponds approximately to the threshold between Level of Service D and Level of Service E. I want to be clear that the 300 users per hour number in the Ashdod Bike Guide is an approximation based on this threshold. In reality, change to trail level of service occurs incrementally as user volumes increase. It's not as if a trail operating fine at 299 users per hour turns into a safety hazard at 300 users per hour. In reality, a trail at the threshold between Level of Service D and Level of Service E is near or at its capacity, and marginal volume increases result in a commensurate change to trail level of service. Mr. Schultes indicated in his testimony that the Ashdod Bike Guide recommends designing to Level of Service C. That is not correct. The Ashdod Bike Guide does not make a recommendation for design level of service for trails. I believe Mr. Schultes was thinking of this statement from the Shared Use Path Level of Service Calculator Users' Guide, which states the following. This is also Exhibit 123. "In general, grades A through C can be considered acceptable levels of service, and D through F can be considered degraded levels of service. Each political jurisdiction and trail managing agency has latitude to adopt different policies covering acceptable levels of service for trails within their own communities." Again, as I just showed, the 300 users per hour number corresponds to the threshold between Level of Service D and Level of Service E, not a Level of Service C. And, the Shared Use Path Level of Service Calculator Users' Guide makes it clear that design level of service is a local policy decision, not something mandated by Ashdod. Let me now address the proposed East Lake-Samamish Trail and specifically whether a change in bicyclist freedom to maneuver constitutes a substantial safety effect that justifies disproportionately impacting other resources. This table is arranged just like the previous table. The second column indicates my assumptions regarding trail width and user volume. The third column shows the percent of delayed passings experienced by bicyclists. And the fourth column shows the resulting level of service. Again, each of the trails on this slide are 10 feet wide. The first trail has 260 users per hour. This results in Level of Service D and 80% delayed passings. This is the threshold between Level of Service D and Level of Service E. This is different from my previous slide because I'm now assuming a mode split for the East Lake-Samamish Trail based on the forecast provided by the county that is different from the default mode split. The second trail has 300 users per hour, the same user volume forecast as the East Lake-Samamish Trail Segment 2B. This results in Level of Service E and 84% delayed passings. The third trail has 340 users per hour, the same user volume forecast as the East Lake-Samamish Trail at Inglewood Hill Road. This results in Level of Service E and 87% delayed passings. So, at its forecasted user volumes of 300 to 340 users per hour, a 10-foot trail would add to delayed passings by four to seven percentage points over a trail at the threshold between Level of Service D and Level of Service E. This is a marginal effect, and it is not reasonable to suggest that disproportionate safety effects will result from this change. Therefore, this justifies the Ashdod Bike Guide's language that the minimum width for a two-directional shared-use path is 10 feet. I also analyzed an 8-foot trail at 300 users per hour. That resulted in a Level of Service F suggesting that a trail with 300 to 340 users per hour will result in an effect that is more than marginal. This justifies the Ashdod Bike Guide's language that an 8-foot trail only be used for a short In the interest of full disclosure, I also analyzed an 11-foot and a 12-foot trail at 300 users per hour. Both resulted in Level of Service C and 35% delayed passings. However, the Shared Use Path Level of Service Calculator Users' Guide is clear that each jurisdiction has latitude to adopt different policies covering acceptable levels of service for trails. Note that there is no effect to delayed passings of an 11-foot trail compared to a 12-foot The Shared Use Path Level of Service Calculator Users' Guide further explains how trail width can be varied on selected segments to improve level of service for trail users and supports thinking about wider trails in 1-foot rather than 2-foot increments to contain costs and minimize environmental impacts. It states, "During design of new trails and widening of existing trails, designers may want to consider varying the trail width to achieve level of service goals in key locations but not overbuild in other locations. Adding width to improve level of service is valuable to trail users even if it is provided only on selected segments. When considering wider trails, designers and decision-makers may want to think in 1-foot rather than 2-foot increments. Typical practice has been to consider widths in 2-foot increments. Using this approach may miss opportunities to provide measurable increases in level of service while at the same time containing costs and minimizing environmental impacts." So, not only are 10-foot and 8-foot trails consistent with the Ashdod Bike Guide, but their existence intermittently on the East Lake-Samamish Trail with an 11-foot or 12-foot trail between them would not result in as much of a degraded condition as if the trail were 10 feet or 8 feet for its entire length. This figure shows how it's likely to feel if you're actually biking along the East Lake-Samamish Trail. This figure shows 11- and 12-foot wide trail segments in green, 10-foot wide segments in purple, and 8-foot wide segments in orange. If you were biking from left to right, you would start on Segment A, an 11- or 12-foot wide segment, experiencing a facility with relatively high freedom to maneuver, and you would generally be able to pass. When you get to Segment B, a 10-foot wide segment shown in purple, you will most likely have to wait to pass. But, once you get onto Segment C, an 11- or 12-foot wide segment, you would again have relatively high freedom to maneuver, so on and so forth for Segments D and E. A reminder that you would experience these conditions during the 30th highest hourly volume, probably the busiest hour of a day, while during the other 23 hours of that day, you would have a higher freedom to maneuver. This is how intermittent 10-foot and 8-foot segments of the East Lake-Samamish Trail with an 11-foot or 12-foot trail between them would not result in as much of a degraded condition as if the trail were 10 feet or 8 feet for its entire length. It's also worth pointing out the time that a bicyclist has to wait to pass depends on the length of the trail segment. At 12.8 miles per hour, an average bicyclist's speed according to the Shared Use Path Level of Service Calculator User's Guide and within the range identified by the Ashdod Bike Guide, a bicyclist would cover a 100-foot trail segment in 5 seconds and a 500-foot trail segment in 26 seconds. In summary, I will restate my key points. There are still aspects of the user volume forecast that defy engineering judgment that do not conform to accepted guidelines. Even if we accept the user volume forecast as is, the 30th highest hourly volume forecasts are right at the 300 users per hour threshold, not two or three times the threshold, but exactly at the threshold. The Ashdod Bike Guide uses specific language to make it clear when the guidelines are flexible and inflexible. Based on the user volume forecast and the flexibility provided by the Ashdod Bike Guide's language, it is consistent with the Ashdod Bike Guide to build a 12-foot paved trail where physical constraints do not exist. However, it is also consistent with the Ashdod Bike Guide to build a narrower trail where physical constraints do exist. And, a context-sensitive design process would conclude that the trail can be narrowed without causing disproportionate safety effects. Additionally, accepted guidelines support widening only selected trail segments and widening in 1-foot rather than 2-foot increments. In consideration of my key points, these are my conclusions and my recommendations to the city. Where physical constraints do not exist, a 12-foot wide trail is desirable given the forecasted user volumes and mode split. This is consistent with the Ashdod Bike Guide. However, it is not consistent with the Ashdod Bike Guide to suggest that narrower trail widths are unallowable. So, where physical constraints do exist, an 11-foot trail is consistent with the Ashdod Bike Guide and has nearly no effect to trail level of service compared to a 12-foot trail. It is not reasonable to cause disproportionate impacts to other resources if they can be avoided with an 11-foot trail. A 10-foot trail is consistent with the Ashdod Bike Guide and has a marginal effect to trail level of service. This should be considered the minimum trail width for long distances of the trail. An 8-foot trail is consistent with the Ashdod Bike Guide but has a more-than-marginal effect to trail level of service. Therefore, this should only be applied for short distances. Lastly, accepted guidance suggests that trail widening only on selected segments is valuable to trail users, further supporting intermittent 10-foot and 8-foot trail segments with 11- or 12-foot segments between them. That's it.
If you could hand, excuse me, hand your script to the clerk.
She want this one?
Or a copy of it?
Yeah.
If you have multiple copies.
I only brought one. I wasn't expecting.
Only one. That's okay. She will enter it as Exhibit 124. Well, I enter it, she marks it. Ms. Pratt, do you have questions you want to ask your witness?
No, I don't.
She doesn't? Mr. Alexander, have you looked at the trail plan that we've got here? Probably the easiest one for you to have looked at would have been Exhibit 7. Did the city ask you to look at that?
The city asked me to review a set of the 60% plans earlier this year.
That's Exhibit 7. The city's recommended conditions include sort of a couple of what I would call open-ended directives to the county that it reduce the width of the trail. One, if I'm remembering correctly, is a more generic statement. Another one relates to where the trail is within 50 feet of the shoreline. That one's a little more specific. The other one's a little more general. In your opinion, and I'll ask it, and if you haven't looked at this information enough to give me an answer, just say so. Don't guess. In your opinion, would you, if you had those two conditions to deal with, would you be able to look at the plan and sit down and decide where you ought to narrow the trail and by how much? If you were, in other, if you put yourself in King County's consultant's position, if you were working for King County, would you be able to take that condition and the philosophy that you've just expressed and come up with specific places where, ah, based on this, this needs to go to this width, this needs to go to that width?
Yes, I would.
You could.
In collaboration with other professionals who understand the severity of impacts to other resources in those segments.
In the, performing that exercise, is it possible that there could be disagreement among the persons involved in the exercise?
I think it's always possible that reasonable minds can disagree.
Would it be safe for me to then say that it would be unlikely that I, as the decision-maker in this permit, could sit here and rely in this permit, could sit here and reliably know what I'm going to get if I impose that condition? Like, am I? I'm not an engineer. I'm not a wetland biologist. I've only been doing this for 39 years. I have a master's in geography slash urban studies. I've listened to lots of experts, wetlands experts, traffic experts over the years. So, I know enough to be dangerous. Not enough to do your work, but enough to be dangerous. I don't think I could sit here and look at these plans and say, oh, well, there's a place where it definitely ought to be reduced, and it ought to go to 11 instead of 10, or 11 instead of 12. I don't think I could do that. In part, maybe because I don't think I have the requisite training to do it, in part because I don't think it would be right for me to do it in a vacuum by myself. And I am not in a position where I can gather a whole bunch of consultants together and sit around a table. This is not a mediation session. So if I put in that city condition, how do I know what I'm going to get? How do I know what I've just approved?
I think, I think that's a good question, and I think that the challenge raised by that question is that the previous documentation provided by the county's consultants have unilaterally said that the trail shall be 12 feet. And I interpret the guidelines very differently. So, no flexibility has been inherently applied in those guidelines in the development of the 60% plans, where perhaps they should have been to this point. And I think that that's perhaps where my testimony disagrees with the testimony of others.
Okay. One of your slides, let's see if I can find it. It's the one that says that agencies can.
Can adopt their own.
Pick different widths. Do you remember which, which number that one is?
I think it's slide 26. They're all numbered on the bottom right there.
Right. I realize that. I'm just trying to find the page. Yes, thank you.
You're welcome.
King County has adopted, and it's in the, a copy of it's in the record, a regional trail standard that says 12 feet, period. Has King County then not made the decision that a trail managing agency certainly has latitude to adopt different policies covering acceptable levels of service for trails within their own communities? Granted, this is a width statement, not level of service, but you see, is that a distinction that's important for me to try and deal with?
I think.
They have a standard on width. This is saying level of service. Is that a distinction?
Let me think about that. The two are obviously related, as was pointed out in my testimony. So, there are certainly level of service outcomes related to the width standards that they derive. Whether or not those outcomes were intended or unintended, I can't say I wasn't there when they developed their standards. But this is a common challenge for really all transportation systems when you have right-of-ways that are owned by agencies that go through jurisdictions. So, this is something that we see, obviously, in this instance where the county owns the trail corridor going through the city of Semamish. It's not that different from where we see washed-out right-of-way going through any city, for that matter. And it's often the case that different jurisdictions disagree on what is an acceptable level of service for a lot of the reasons related to context-sensitive design that were stated.
Ms. Pratt, I think Mr. Alexander was your only witness for today?
Yes.
True? Okay.
True.
Then are we at the point of deciding a time period for King County to be able to submit its, it's, I guess it's going to be Mr. Schultheis's rebuttal to Mr. Alexander in writing, and then the timing schedule for you folks to submit your closing statements? I think that's where we are. I get bobbleheads nodding yes, so I guess that's where we are. Let's start then with, with you, Ms. Fleming. How much time do you want to give Mr. Schultheis, recognizing that he's not here to consult with? You're going to give him a deadline with which he has to live?
I know he has some other matters, and with the holiday this week, we would ask to have until December 1st.
What is, what?
That's a Friday.
What day of the week? Is that Friday?
Friday.
Friday. Then I'm, I think we discussed this very briefly. I'm presuming that you folks want to do sequential closings like you, as if you were doing them verbally?
Yes, just, you mean at the same time?
Huh?
Submit them on the same date?
No, sequential.
Oh, sequential. Okay.
Now, I don't care. It's going to lengthen the process. That doesn't bother me. If we were doing them orally, Ms. Pratt would go first, and you would get to hear her closing before you had to speak yours. I've had attorneys say they don't care, and they file them both on the same day, which works for me. I've also had attorneys, especially representing applicants, who say, heck, no. I'm entitled to hear or see her closing before I have to speak or write mine. I don't care.
I, I think that in the interest of timeliness, we would just recommend that it be submitted on the same day, and then we can move forward.
Works for me. So, closing. How long after December 1st? Anybody want to submit it on the Friday before Christmas?
Mr. Examiner, I'll be able.
Ms. Pratt.
I'll be able to give Mr. Schultheis's rebuttal to Mr. Alexander, so he can explain it to me, the week of the 4th. So, I would ask to have maybe until the 22nd to submit closings.
So, 22nd, good enough?
That's fine.
Okay. Closing's December 22nd. Seems like an anticlimactic end to our four-day process. I have a question from the audience, and I recognize your face. I apologize. I can't remember.
I'm Reed Brockway. Very quickly.
That's right, Mr. Brockway.
I recognize a public rebuttal is not in the program.
Correct.
For this recent testimony, there's one key point that has been overlooked. May I state it? Very agree. That is that the trail width goes beyond near the pavement portion. We have this question, margins, and that was never brought up.
Okay. Thank you. I think we're through, except for the submittal. Now, I should indicate that Mr. Schultheis's, I will assign exhibit number to Mr. Schultheis's rebuttal, or your rebuttal on his behalf. I don't know how that's going to work, but I will assign an exhibit number to it, and we will assign an exhibit number to each of the closing statements. And even though they're both going to come in on the same day, just because usually the city would go first with the county second and last, I'll put them in that order, so they look good in the list. Is there anything else that we need to transact? And I'm looking here at counsel and principals for the applicant and the staff before we adjourn.
Just that we would need to get a copy of exhibit 124 and any other comments or exhibits that came in that we weren't provided.
Well, let's see. Did you get, you had a, he handed out a copy, or Ms. Pratt handed you a copy of Mr. Alexander's?
Yes. I have all the exhibits that he referred to, except for.
Okay. So, and you have all of his except for?
124.
124? Is that the only one you're missing?
Yes.
His written statement? Yeah. And I need a copy of that, too.
Mr. Galt?
Uh, Ms. Pratt.
There were five, it looks like, public comments left in the basket at the back.
Oh, okay. Hand them up, please. Thank you. We will enter as exhibit 125. A letter dated November 15 from Mark Cross.
What's, I'm sorry, what's 124?
Mr. Alexander's.
Got it. Thank you.
That's 125, reading. Exhibit 126 is a letter from Bill Greve, dated November 18. Exhibit 127 is entitled "Testimony of Charles Meyer," November 20. That's exhibit 127. Exhibit 128 is a statement from Joanne T. Pietro Monaco, dated, signed November 20. That's 128. And 129 is a statement from Ada McKee, dated November 20. There being no further reason to sit here today, our hearing is adjourned with the record left open in the manner that we have previously described, which I won't bore you by repeating for about the third time. I would just indicate, remember your deadline for closings, the 22nd.
Thank you very much.
I had indicated way back on day one, when I made the statement that I had 10 working days under the code to issue the decision that I would likely be asking for additional time. I don't think I will, based on my schedule and the fact that Christmas and January days don't count in the 10 working days. I think I should be able to deal with this within the 10 working days that the code gives, so I am not requesting additional time. Okay, we stand adjourned.
Mr. Galt?
Yes.
I apologize. I just want to clarify one thing. Public comment is closed. The only thing you're getting is.
Hearing closes.
Thank you.
That's it. Fini, finished, done. We stop at about 2,500 pages of public comments. Yeah. Anyway, we are adjourned. Have a good day. As I always say, drive carefully wherever you're going from here. And if the county wants copies of these letters that just came in, stick around.